Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, wow, it's a lot stronger than it was earlier today. This is good. We're sorry for the delay. We had a couple of fairly significant events that we had to take care of and deal with in closed session. And so for that, we apologize. Do we have Mr. Seifert on Zoom with us now? Mr. Seifert, are you there?
Chairman May, can you hear me?
I can now. You took it off mute. How are you?
Doing good, thank you.
Good. Soon as I find the notification that says, read all the order. So, in accordance with Policy 1-6.9, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. You want, oh, I need a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Coach Eichenberry's second by Mr. Coleman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You can just say no if you don't agree. In accordance with Policy 1-6.9, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, Mr. Bob Seifert will be participating by phone from Michigan due to work obligations set before this meeting was rescheduled due to inclement weather last week. And with that, we'll continue on. Coach Ike, do you have a certification for us?
Bless you.
And God bless you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the board will certify the following. Whereas the Hanover County School Board has convened closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Hanover County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification applies, and only if such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Coleman, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence for the recent passing of Joan Beck Willis, who retired from Hanover County Public Schools in 2004 as the principal of Cold Harbor Elementary School. Our thoughts are with the Willis family and friends. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our invocation this evening will be given by Ms. Welch, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Lynn.
Almighty God, as we stand in awe of your goodness and mercy today, we invite you to be present amongst us as we gather for this school board meeting. Guide our discussions and decisions. Grant us with wisdom and understanding. Help us make decisions that honor you. May we work together in a spirit of unity and love. Amen.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes prior to tonight. And there are four sets of minutes that we have all been shared. And I would entertain a motion. Mr. Martin?
So moved.
Is there a second? Ms. Lynn? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes, the four sets of minutes are approved. And with that, I think, Mr. Whitley, it's your show for a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Penny Cuff. It is always a pleasure to bring forth the great news of the school division. As you know, Mr. Chairman, we will need to postpone our first recognition of the night that's on the agenda to the March meeting due to a scheduling conflict. With that said, for our next two recognitions, please join me in welcoming the principal of Hanover High School, Mrs. Chris Reese, who will recognize the 2024 VHSL Class A State Boys Volleyball Player of the Year and the 2024 VHSL Class Four Boys Volleyball Coach of the Year, both from Hanover High School. Take it away, Mrs. Reese.
Mr. Whitley? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, School Board, Dr. Penny Cuff, and senior staff. Thank you so much for inviting us this evening to celebrate two incredible Hanover Hawks. This evening, I want to start with, I'm excited to honor Hanover Senior Hilton Sherm. Hilton has been named the 2024 VHSL Class Four Boys Volleyball Player of the Year. Hilton ended the season with 702 assists, 148 digs, 75 kills, 39 aces, and 32 blocks. He also received the MVP award and was named All-Region Player of the Year. Hilton has served as captain of the team and has been an incredible student athlete. Hanover High School will certainly miss him next year as he heads off to New Adventures. Congratulations, Hilton. It is also my pleasure to recognize Hillary Castle. Coach Castle has been named VHSL Class Four Boys Volleyball Coach of the Year. Coach Castle has been the boys volleyball coach at Hanover High School for more than 13 years. Coach Castle has guided Hanover to over 144 wins, two state runner-up trophies, and back-to-back state tournament appearances. We are thrilled to celebrate Coach Castle.
Hey, our next recognition of the evening goes to the recipient of the Superintendent's Professional Development Scholarship. Each year, $1,000 is awarded to a teacher whose potential of achieving greater things with and for students in the classroom would be enhanced if afforded a significant professional development opportunity. Since 1999, the Education, Hanover Education Foundation has graciously funded this scholarship that can be used to support tuition, books, travel, and other related activities. This year's recipient is a talented and dedicated literacy coach at Bell Creek Middle School who will be using the scholarship to engage in professional learning activities in Lubec, Maine this summer. Here she will attend the, help me here, quite a writing retreat, where she will study under writers and poets Ralph Fletcher and Georgia Heard. She will mirror this experience when supporting students to become effective writers. She will also visit the summer home of Franklin D. Roosevelt to learn more about his real life and share the knowledge with the U.S. History II class at her school. Her goal is to develop an increased awareness and understanding of working with students in order to move them to greater levels of writing effectiveness. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Nina Foster-Pritchard. Great job. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my portion of the recognitions, and I will turn it over to Dr. Penny Cuff for a special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Tonight, I have the pleasure of honoring our school board for School Board Appreciation Month. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month. It is a time to honor the work of our school board members and celebrate public education. The Virginia School Board Association's theme of this year's celebration is Champions of Opportunity. It highlights the efforts made by our school board members to create pathways for student achievement and innovation in our schools. The VSBA also wishes to recognize our chairman, Mr. Colonel Bob May, who served as a delegate member in the 2024 VSBA Delegate Assembly. Thank you all for all you do. And I want you to know that at each one of your desks, you have cards from the schools. And the student council members have signed those for you. And thanks for the work that you do. And some have even written special notes to you in those. Yes? And if we could have our school board members come down, Ms. Brown will give you your certificate, and we would like to get a group picture.
So I realized, we didn't practice this earlier, but I realized that I need to be at the microphone to be able to make the next recognition. And so with that, one of the privileges of being the chairman of the school board is that we get to recognize two outstanding members of our support staff that are really the backbone that keep us going and being on time and always making sure that we're here. And so with that, we have, we're blessed to have, in my four years on the board, I've never, never seen a clerk quite as proficient as Ms. Kate Brown is. And when she had to be absent for a while with her father and step right in and hug step, and we didn't even skip a beat. And so there are a lot of boards that wish they had that kind of depth, the perception to be able to have the support from two wonderful clerks. And so with that, we're here tonight to recognize our clerks, the clerk of the board and the assistant clerk of the board, and we thank you for all you do to support us. And with that, now we're up to board member announcements. Do we have any board member announcements tonight? Anybody like to make any announcements? Board members? Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the apologies that we started with on the delayed start. I know it's probably very frustrating to be sitting there for a half an hour waiting on us to come out. We tried like heck to get out here on time. Please know that we are, we do value your time, and we know it's a sacrifice for you to be here. And we're trying to get through our closed business quicker, and we will continue to try to improve upon that. So I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody on this side? Coach?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize some of our sports teams that at least I attended to this past weekend, the track meet at Atlee High School. And it was regional competition, and the Atlee Boys and Girls won relatively resoundingly, especially the boys. Quite a few regional champions individually. And also from the swim perspective, since I happened to be there Friday night, and the Hanover Boys happened to win that championship. And both the boys and the girls will be sending swimmers, knock on wood with the weather, to Christiansburg at the Virginia Tech facility this coming weekend. So I'm sorry I wasn't not able to get to wrestling or gymnastics, but I know wrestling was hosted at Enrico and gymnastics was hosted at Hanover with a lot of Mechanicsville High School help. So there's a lot of partnership going on in the whole county within this region of many dozens of schools. And I just want to call your attention that, you know, three of the four performances were held at Hanover facilities. So that, again, take your hat off to some of the people that made that happen because it just doesn't snap a finger and poof, the athletes show up and it all runs itself. That's not the way things go. So I applaud everyone that did work and worked diligently in order to pull those successful regional championships. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach. I have just a couple of announcements. The first one is Andrew Rickman, a student at Mechanicsville High School, signed an academy contract with the Richmond Kickers. Andrew is a left-footed midfielder who grew up going to kickers' games and said at the signing that he always wanted to be on the field. That dream is now a reality. The second one is band students across the county gathered at the end of January for the All-County High School Band Festival at Patrick Henry High School. Students rehearsed on Thursday and held a beautiful concert on Friday, conducted by Dr. Tim Roble, from, Robley, I'm sorry, from Shenandoah Conservatory of Music. On behalf of the school board, I would like to publicly thank our valued partners with the Atlee Station and Patrick Henry Family YMCA's for generously showing their support of our community by allowing our employees, who may have been without power last week, access to their shower facilities. As I have often shared, our community's support of our schools and those who serve our students is part of the secret sauce that makes our school division so special. We are pleased to have such strong community partners as Team Hanover County Public Schools, and thank you, YMCA's, for your support. I know we have over 30 people signed up to speak tonight at public comment. So I'm going to try to make just a couple of comments to hopefully give you a chance to think about your comments of what you're going to say. But I wanted to let you know first, in the, in addition to the ongoing boundary But I wanted to let you know first, in addition to the ongoing boundary adjustment process, your school board continues to search for our next superintendent of schools. Last week, we held a special meeting with our third-party vendor H Y A to discuss the search. Specifically, we received the results of the community engagement opportunities held last month, the resulting desired characteristics, and the overall leadership report for the next superintendent. We are thankful for your engagement and partnership throughout this important process. Interviews for the position remain scheduled to take place next month of our anticipated vote on the new superintendent in April of 2025. Similar to the boundary adjustment process, we encourage you to stay informed throughout this process by visiting the dedicated Superintendent's Search webpage on the Hanover County Public School website. And my last comment deals with the boundary adjustment that is currently going on. On behalf of the school board, I would like to take this opportunity to discuss what we all recognize as a topic of significant and continued interest, our boundary adjustment process. I want to reassure our community, there has been no final decisions made, and we are working closely with M G T, our third-party vendor, to refine any of the proposed scenarios. Please also be assured that we remain committed to a transparent, collaborative, and thoughtful process as we work to make decisions in the best interest of our school division. We have and will continue to follow a very deliberate process. While I encourage you to review the boundary adjustment webpage on the Hanover County Public Schools website for extensive information regarding the timeline, scenarios, interactive maps, and frequently asked questions, the school board would like to share the following regarding the process. Last spring, we determined that a boundary adjustment process is needed as part of a long-term and comprehensive solution towards addressing student enrollment and capacity across all schools in the division, including Cool Spring Elementary School. Accordingly, a competitive request for proposal process began that included receiving and evaluating bids and conducting due diligence. This process was specifically administered by the Hanover County Government, which oversees the procurement process across agencies in the county, including the Hanover County Public Schools, and is in alignment with established procurement policies and state codes. Specifically, the Virginia Public Procurement Act, M G T, was selected through this competitive process. This fall, we began this process in earnest by gathering and analyzing data and developing forecasts and boundary scenarios utilizing M G T's expertise. The proposed scenarios were shared with our community at the end of January, and robust community engagement commenced. The deadline to complete the M G T survey was last week, and we have received the input from M G T's analysis of all the data inputs. We are deeply appreciative of our community's engagement in recent weeks and throughout this process that will further inform our decision-making. So what's next? We will work closely with M G T to refine the scenarios into recommendations for presentation and discussion at our March 11th work session. During the March 11th work session, we will work together to make a final recommendation that will be presented at our business meeting that night of March 11. We have meetings coming up over the next week, within the next seven days, actually. We have two meetings scheduled where members of committee of our board will work with M G T to further refine the scenarios and come up with any additional options that could be considered to work toward a recommendation for our March 11th meeting. Please know that even as late as this past Friday, M G T has been working to look at the scenarios. I cannot reiterate this enough. There has not been any decisions made. There have been no discussion about a decision. We are trying to work through the process and come up with a recommendation that is best suited for Hanover County Public Schools. As we shared from the onset of this process, we remain scheduled to vote on the boundary adjustment at our April 8th meeting. We continue to advise that you may stay up to date on this process by visiting the H C P S Boundary Adjustment Website. I hope that clarifies a little bit more, as we keep getting a lot of statements about, well, y'all have already made decisions. We've not made any decisions. There's not even a recommendation. So I hope that that will help you to alleviate your concerns as we try to work through this process deliberately, diligently, and what's best for our Hanover County Public Schools. So with that, we'll move on to the approval of our consent agenda. Do I have a recommendation for approval of the consent agenda? Coach, aye?
Just like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Here, a second?
Second.
Mr. Coleman. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to the instructional highlight, which is Belle Creek Middle School's math program. And so we're just delighted to have this presentation this evening. I will just say, during our school tours this year, and I'm not trying to embarrass him, but during our school tours, he gave us a little bit of a prelude of what he's going to give us tonight. I assume it's going to be close to the same data. And this is pretty remarkable, and we're very proud as a school system to have principals like this who have taken a challenge of trying to increase math scores and come up with solutions. So with that, I have, Tim, I've done all I can do to set you up. So Mr. Sanders, it's yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Pennekoff, and senior staff. Thank you for your invitation to speak here tonight. I am Tim Sanders, the proud principal of Belle Creek Middle School. At Belle Creek, we ask our teachers to believe, create, and maximize our students' learning while pushing them to succeed each and every day. Our students are expected to follow our six pillars of character, which are responsibility, fairness, respect, caring, citizenship, and trustworthiness. Actually, a week and a half ago, we held our Semester Pillar Awards, which we awarded a hundred and fifty-plus students who earned the recognition from their teachers in one of these six pillars. At B C M S, we are fortunate enough to work with nine hundred students each day. You can see that breakdown by grade level here on this slide. And we currently offer those students eighty-four clubs, to which they can participate in each month. We have eight National Board Certified Teachers on staff with two more in the pipeline, and we have three hundred and thirty-two students enrolled in our Performing Arts Department. That is up from seventy-three right after COVID. And we are also proud to say that we are a fully accredited school. You can see here that our vision at B C M S is aligned with H C P S's comprehensive plan, which is to provide a high-quality learning experience that equips students with the necessary skills to thrive in all aspects of their lives. We aim to provide a deeper understanding of the material while enhancing the learning of struggling learners all the way through to our most gifted thinkers. In the next few moments, I'll be sharing with you one of the most important instructional endeavors at Belle Creek, as well as some key instructional strategies we are implementing in these classrooms as we support students and their successes each day. I'm excited to talk to you tonight about station teaching and how it's transforming the learning within our sixth-grade math classrooms. But first, I would like to give a shout out to Ms. Burton, to Ms. Massimini, to Ms. Boyle for their dynamic and dedicated work in their sixth-grade classrooms, and also to our math coach, Ms. De Noon, for her expertise and leadership in this area. Although not a new concept and actually quite popular at the elementary school level, but hard to implement at the secondary level, station teaching is an instructional approach where students go through various and different learning stations, each designed to target specific skills in a way that best fits their needs. Instead of a one-size-fits-all instruction, students experience a variety of teaching methods, some working independently, others collaborating in small groups, and some receiving direct instruction from their teacher. This dynamic structure allows greater engagement, a deeper understanding, and a personalized learning experience that helps all students succeed. In the pictures here, you will see some students engaging in this work in one of our sixth-grade math classrooms. You'll see high levels of collaboration amongst our students and direct instruction being given to a small group of students. The students then rotate through, and each experience various forms of instruction throughout the entire class period. Some classes can have two stations, three stations, four, and even up to five stations, depending on the level of activity happening in the room that day. One of the most effective ways to group students in station teaching is by performance on their most recent assessment. In this setup, students who need reinforcement on a particular concept can work closely with the teacher, while others demonstrate mastery, can engage in challenging problems and real-world applications. Another group might be utilizing technology and reviewing skills at their own pace. This strategy ensures that each student is working at the appropriate level, allowing them to build confidence while closing learning gaps. Another way to structure our stations, one that really empowers our students, is by grouping them based on how they arrived at their answer, rather than just whether they got it right or wrong on their assessment. This approach helps students see that there's often more than one way to solve a problem. Some may use mental math, while others rely on step-by-step algorithms, and some may find a pattern or a shortcut within their work. By discussing their thought processes in small groups, students gain a broader understanding of math and learn from their peers in a meaningful way. This mindset not only improves problem-solving skills, but also fosters collaboration and a growth mindset amongst our students. I have some data here. I know it's a lot to look at, but what you'll see here is a sample taken from a pre-assessment at the beginning of the year in sixth grade, and then again at the mid-year, so data collected rather recently. The assessments cover the key concepts in sixth grade, such as fractions, decimals, integers, and even some equations built in. As you can see here, the results are pretty remarkable. Our students showed an incredible one hundred and fifty percent growth from the beginning of the year to the mid-year. This kind of growth in just a few short months is nothing short of remarkable. It speaks volumes about the effectiveness of station teaching and to the dedication of our educators. Imagine what this approach can continue to do for our students as we move forward. Station teaching is just more than a different way of structuring a lesson. It is a way to make learning accessible and engaging for all of our students. By tailoring instruction to the needs and getting them to understand math, it's more than just about finding the right answer. It's about understanding the journey that got them there. So in closing, our commitment to excellence in teaching, learning, and leadership is at the core of everything we do at Belle Creek Middle. By implementing data-driven instruction and ideas such as station teaching, we are ensuring that all students have the tools they need to succeed. I appreciate the hard work and the dedication of our sixth-grade math teams, our math coach, and to our community and the staff for supporting our students each and every day. I want to thank the board for their time tonight, and go Bulldogs. And I'll take any questions from the board if you guys have anything for me.
Thank you, sir. Any board members, questions, or comments?
Just a comment. That's super impressive and way to go.
Thank you.
Keep doing your thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This side? Coach?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I appreciate your presentation, and how long have you been in this position?
It was three years in January. So I came in year, one year, so I've been three years.
In the middle of the year, right?
Yes, sir.
Well done, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had to, don't walk off yet. I had the privilege of, on our tours, I sat down with Mr. Sanders after watching his presentation on this, and you and your concept and your ideas are something for us all to emulate. And we appreciate your hard work and dedication. We appreciate you tackling a tough situation, and we appreciate you instilling in your teachers a can-do attitude that's allowed this to happen. And so I ask you to take back to your staff, I know you're not the one in the classroom doing this, but you need to take back to your teachers, this is well done. This is a job well done, and we are, well, I can just tell you, we at Team Hanover are extremely proud of it. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, I'm sorry you have to follow that, but Ms. Stone, you want to talk about boundary updates, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Pennekoff. Actually, Mr. May, you stole all of my thunder in your opening remarks, but it can't hurt to go through some of this again. What we've included here in board docs is just the timeline of the work done to date or completed to date. As you mentioned, it was determined during the spring of 2024 to start the boundary adjustment process. There was an R F P issued in the summer, and we worked with the county to go through a competitive process. The contract was awarded to M G T. During the month of October, they were collecting data from the county and from the school division, and from, they were getting birth records from the Department of Health. So it's a variety of data that went into their analysis and their future projections, student projections. During October and December, we also worked with the committee to look at potential scenarios and tried to develop as many as we could to bring forward to the community and to the school board during that time. And as you know, in January, there were three scenarios that were brought forward to the community as part of the community meetings. And that was just to receive feedback. We received feedback during those community meetings, and also there was a survey that received feedback. That closed on February 10th, and then on February 14th, just last Friday, M G T compiled all of that data, put it together, and shared it with the school board at that time. And we're here tonight to talk about just a few of the next steps forward. The, we have two meetings coming up with the school board, one on February 20th, one on February 25th. They both start at 1:00 P. M. The entire school board is invited, they're part of that process. But there is a work group that has been formed just to ensure that we always have people there to work on this, and that includes Mr. Eichenberry, Mrs. Welsh, and Mr. Martin. So they will be at both of those meetings. It's an active process. It's a live process. One of the things that we heard from M G T is they have created study groups that are made up of fifty to one hundred students throughout all of the county. And when you're working on those scenarios, whether you're perfecting them or creating new scenarios, you have the opportunity in real time to really move those focus groups around and then say, okay, what does this look like? What does the capacity look like for Cool Spring Elementary? What does it look like for the neighboring schools? What will it look like today? What will it look like in five years? What will it look like in ten years? So still work to be performed. When M G T met, when they were at the community meetings, they talked about that sometimes when they work with the community, the final scenario is something very different from where they start. So again, as Mr. May shared, we're not, at the end, a decision has not been made. There's still more work to be done. Hopefully, at the March 11th meeting, this work group may come back with a recommendation to the school board that this is the scenario that we really want to focus in on. And then we would go away, and between then and the April meeting, we would perfect that scenario more and also develop an implementation plan. What we saw in some of the survey results talked about, how will this be implemented? What does it mean for existing students? And so that work and that plan would be developed between the March and April date, brought back to the school board at the March, at the April meeting for a final approval of a scenario, and then final approval of an implementation plan. So I would be happy to take any questions in regards to the process.
Are there any questions for Ms. Stone? Any comments? Ms. Welsh?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stone. I would like to say that I did look at the data, and it is, it is very, very good. I'm glad that we have this survey and this data. I would like to say that in my, while I was looking at it, I was very pleased to see that overwhelmingly the community thinks that a boundary adjustment is necessary, and that's the data that we received and that came in. And so, you know, while nothing's set in stone, a decision does need to be made, and we will move forward with that. And this process also really didn't start when we hired M G T or even when we decided that we needed to hire somebody. It started in September 2023 when we got an email saying that we had a problem, a situation at Cool Spring, and your school board went to work then. And so, you know, we, we know this is a sensitive topic, and we want to do right by our community, but also keeping, maintaining the quality of education in Hanover County.
Thank you. Anybody else? Coach?
Yeah, kind of tagging on to what Ms. Welch said, but from a different angle, I also appreciate the emails that we've received. appreciate the emails that we've received, that you see the big picture, that the school board didn't create this problem either. And again, I do appreciate those kind of comments, that you have seen that we are a school board, we're not people that approve zonings or anything like this, or where to build developments or anything like that, that's not what our job is. And again, just keep in mind, I appreciate y'all being able to see that, that broad spectrum. Again, we're about schools, and I recognize, and I'm very glad you recognize that too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I was, in a prior life, I was a college basketball referee for about seven years, and this process is, feels very similar. Regardless of what we decide to do, it's going to make a lot of people unhappy. So it is, it's very challenging, we understand that. We all, I have kids in the schools, many of the folks up here do as well, and it potentially impacts us. So, we don't take it lightly, we know it's very sensitive, and ultimately, whatever we decide, we know there's going to be a group of people that are not really happy with this.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Stone.
Thank you.
And with that, I think we are going to talk about another very popular discussion point, unscheduled remote learning days. Ms. Greif?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, Dr. Penicuff. I'm excited, well, okay, excited probably isn't the right word. I am glad to bring you what our plan is for the upcoming weather that may or may not happen this week. When we recognized that we were in a situation where we had exhausted our opportunities for making up instructional days within our calendar, Dr. Penicuff had staff begin working very quickly on an unscheduled remote learning plan in alignment with the guidance that has come out from the state. Much of this information has been shared with the public already, we wanted to make sure that everybody was prepared, should we have another event, and you'll even see a couple of these slides are just a tad outdated because we had a little bit of weather last week. So why are we doing this? It is in order to maintain the instructional integrity of our school system. We could have done that by having Saturday makeup sessions, or taking away some of spring break, or extending our school days. We recognize that those would not be popular options with our community, and we recognize that we can accomplish a great deal with some remote learning if it is structured appropriately. And so while we always want our students with us face-to-face, we feel that the plan that we have created for the remainder of this year is a good starting point, and that we will continue to improve upon that should we need to implement a similar plan next year. So here's where our slides are slightly outdated, because the "we are here" is where actually we are there. And so we are at the point where we have, as I said, exhausted our makeup days, and then we are heading into some other strategies. So the first strategy that we used last week is to take two of our exam days that were previously early release days and turn those into full instructional days. We will be coming out with a bell schedule for those two days for our secondary students, so that the students and their families understand how we're going to arrange exams on those two days and then the two days that follow. There did not need to be an adjustment for Day Eight, but Day Nine is on the horizon. And so when we get to Day Nine, we will begin our remote learning days, and as we have said, we have put out quite a bit of information into the public, but I'm going to go over some of the highlights. So the elementary plan is activity-based, but not necessarily technology-based, because our students do not take their devices home with them, those stay at the schools for use. And so the information will be pushed out through Parent Square and other options, so that everyone gets the same set of information. Work will be completed for a participation grade, and because we are counting these days as instructional days with the state, we will also be using work completion as a proxy for attendance. The secondary plan is similar, although we will use technology. We will be using our Schoology platform for our secondary students, that's where the teachers will be housing the assignments. We do recognize that we still have pockets of our county that do not have the same access to broadband, and so we are making sure that in our schools today and tomorrow, that we are giving our students instructions as to how to download assignments, Google Docs, whatever that might be, to their Chromebook in advance, so that they have that available to them if they do not have Wi-Fi or internet access at home. We will be announcing A Days and B Days as we go through, should we have multiple opportunities to engage in unscheduled remote learning, we will make sure that we are balancing our A Days and B Days, so stay tuned to social media, so that we know which day it will be. And then the teachers will, will be working on staying on pace with the curriculum that they have in front of them. Our teachers are responsible for making sure that they have their laptops at home, and that they are available for our students and their parents to contact them throughout the day. We want to make sure that even though we are not doing synchronous learning, that if a student should have a question about an assignment, that they can get an answer on that particular day, rather than having to wait. Our teachers do have the opportunity to use Google Meet, should that work with both the technology that the teacher has, and then obviously it would be optional for the students, as we know that there's a varying degree of access to internet throughout the county. So we do understand that the Wi-Fi access may be something that is either intermittent, as we saw with the last storm, or something that is just not out in some of the corners of our county, and so there will be flexibility with assignments and due dates to make sure that we're giving all of our students the opportunity to be successful on the assignments that are given. So, again, we are talking about that flexibility, the adaptability of both our students and our families. We're asking for everyone to take a deep breath, have a lot of patience and grace. We know that this is not the way that we prefer to learn, but we do believe that this is an opportunity for learning. And so it's not just something that's checking a box, it's something that's important for our students to master the subjects that they are undertaking this year. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, as long as it doesn't involve me giving a weather forecast for the rest of the week.
We're going to call on somebody else for that. Anybody else, any to die us? Anybody?
You said we're at Day Six, right?
No, that's where we were when we published this, then we got some snow last week, so we're, we have gotten through Day Eight, and we will be on Day Nine when the next something happens.
If, if something else happened.
If, not when.
Any other questions?
Can you go back to Day Nine, that graphic, just so that everybody sees this? So the next one is Day Nine.
Correct.
Not where it says next missed.
It is not. This was published before our brother last week.
So everybody's aware of the inevitable.
No, it's not inevitable.
It's just inevitable.
It is, is, I think it's important to note, we, there is specific guidance from the state on what we have to do, on how many days we can make up and miss and things like that. So this plan is a detailed plan, work together, coordinating with the state guidelines for us to be able to continue to educate our students. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, statements? All righty. The Hagrid Whitley, do you have anything you want to, it feels like you should follow her now. All right, now for the elementary, are you going to go right into the elementary recess schedule?
I am.
Excellent.
All right. Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Penicuff, for the 2025-26 school year, HCPS will extend the elementary school recess block from 30 to 40 minutes to support students' physical and mental well-being. To accommodate this change while preserving instructional time, student arrival will be reduced from a 30-minute window to a 20-minute window, aligning with pre-pandemic practices. Morning meetings in grades two through five will also be shortened by five minutes, allowing for more time for core instruction. Principals will have flexibility in allocating instructional time based on student data to ensure that key content areas receive appropriate emphasis. These adjustments maintain a structured and balanced schedule that prioritizes both academic excellence and student wellness. We went over this presentation and this handout in the work session, and so this is a recap for the public who may not have been involved in that earlier today. As you can see, there are some tables in here that will give the appropriate guidance for our principals to create their comprehensive schedules. This has been shared with them, and they are very excited for the opportunity to make individual decisions based upon their own school's data, while ensuring that our students have the opportunity for exercise, fresh air, and a break from learning throughout different portions of the day. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board members? Mr. Seifert, you got anything?
I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Penicuff and the administrators for taking such a hard look at this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And our, our next steps, you want to just talk about that, or you walk away, please?
Well, our next steps are already in process. As we are looking at creating schedules, we're already in that process for next year with all of our principals, so they've received this information as well. We are looking at where there need to be some small shifts with our resource teacher schedules. We are waiting for the boundary adjustment to make some of those final decisions about staffing and sectioning and, and things like that, where are students with disabilities and what their IEPs require. So there will be some heavy lifting that happens at the end of the school year after the April meeting, but I'm very confident in our principals' ability to do that work and consult with central office to be able to, to create the best environments for our students.
Excellent, thank you. You got the point across I wanted, thank you. All right, and with that, I believe that we are through with our information and discussion section, and now we're into the public comment. Just before we get started, we have over 30 people signed up to speak tonight. There is no way we'll get through 30 people in an hour. So our plan is, is that we will do the first 20 that we, or whenever Madam Clerk stops us after an hour, and we will go through the rest of the meeting, which tonight, there's not a whole lot of other things in the meeting, other than probably a presentation that everybody is actually waiting on, it's from our distinguished architect, so that'll be following the public comment session, and then, once we're done, before we adjourn, we'll go back and open back up public comment time for anybody that's still here that wants to have public comments tonight. So with that, I will now read our public comment intro, which is, "The school board conducts the public comment segment of its meeting to receive information from the general public on matters related to Hanover County Public Schools. Per board policy, the total time allotted for public comment shall not exceed 60 minutes. Speakers addressing the school board are requested to follow these guidelines. As each speaker is recognized by the chairperson, the speaker is asked to clearly state the speaker's name, magisterial district, and the subject of the speaker's remarks. Speakers are asked to address their comments to the board and not to the audience. The board requests that the audience refrain from responding to speakers' comments with applause or any other audible expressions of approval or disapproval. The time allotted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Each speaker's elapsed time will appear on the screen. Speakers will also receive notification from Mr. Vice Chair when time has expired. Although the board does not permit the use of slideshows or other protected materials during this segment, speakers are invited to provide printed copies of such materials to the board. The board expresses its appreciation for the public's input and cooperation during this segment of the meeting." And with that...
Good evening. We have so many people tonight, we have 30 speakers, and... I see right behind this big piece of wood, I... So I'm not the block after castle, he's such a small guy. I see that it is, and so what we're asking, that if you're the next person to come and speak, if you don't mind, so that we know you're here, I'd appreciate that. So I'll, I'll name the first person, then I'll say you're on deck, and so the on-deck person is that here, and the non, the castle blocking chair. Thank you.
I thought you were walking out on me, I was getting worried.
It's the second time tonight. Okay, Joshua Paramore, are you here? You're up tonight, and on deck is Kimberly Foley.
Hello, my name's Joshua Paramore from the Decanixville District, and speaking today about the treatment of our children in our schools. Good evening, everyone. Since we opened with a prayer, it seemed appropriate for me to continue on with a message from the Word of God. Will you please turn your Bibles to Matthew 19, 13, and 14? Then people brought little children to Jesus for him to place his hands on them and pray for them, but the disciples rebuked them. Jesus said, "Let the little children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to such as these." Yet, there's a contingent of citizens in our county that would label some of our Hanover County children as evil, as enemies. Now, these children are primarily of LGBTQ, identify as LGBTQ+, or are children of color. Now, Christ had something to say to his people about treating your enemies. Matthew 5:43 says, "You have heard that it is said, 'You shall love your neighbor and hate your enemy,' but I say to you, 'Love your enemy,' and wouldn't this be especially true of the children that have been placed in your care?" Yet, it feels that this school board continues to treat their enemies with hostility in the pursuit of political priorities. The sudden firing of our superintendent with no explanation, forcing a new superintendent on us purely out of political partisanship, ridding our current school system of equity and transparency, refusing to investigate and address rampant bullying committed by students and staff, and banning books that might offer the smallest bit of comfort to children that desperately need it. In prioritizing these political policies and agendas over these children's well-being, we are harming the most vulnerable students placed in your care. And make no mistake, these actions and inactions are causing real harm to the children in our county. Each board member that votes for these cruel policies, and each person supporting the people appointing these board members, is responsible for the harm that has befallen these children, and here's the thing about harm. It leads to anger, resentment, fear, and uncertainty, and other stumbling blocks paced in the, placed in the paths of these children. And ultimately, who will these children see as responsible for these stumbling blocks? Thirty seconds. Christians. The Christians of Hanover County drive the decisions made by this school board and in our county, and because of these decisions, supported by Christians, harm is being inflicted on these children, and that harm turns into stumbling blocks. And do you know what Christ has to say about those who would cause children to stumble? "It is better to tie a millstone around your neck and cast yourself into the sea." Matthew 18:6.
Thank you. Kimberly Foley, followed by Adam Packett.
Good evening, Chairman May, members of the school board, and Dr. Penicuff. My name is Kimberly Foley, I'm a resident of King's Charter in the Ashland District. Thank you all so much for your service to Hanover, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on, shockingly, the essential issue of elementary school boundary adjustments. Families and neighborhoods across the district have deep ties to our schools. For my family and my three boys, that's Cool Spring Elementary. My husband, a lifelong King's Charter resident, attended Pearson's Corner for kindergarten and was in the first first-grade class at Cool Spring. We chose to settle here on the same street where he grew up because of the strong school system. However, I'm sure there's many families behind me that can say the same story. We are all incredibly lucky to have Hanover County Public Schools, regardless of the elementary school, the middle, or the high school our children attend, and we have all of you to thank for that. That said, and it's going to sound like I'm preaching to the choir, Cool Spring's overcrowded, and there's an uneven utilization of district facilities. One of the reasons you, the board, starting last September, as you said, Whitney, conducted, chose to conduct the boundary adjustment exercise over installing an eight-room learning cottage and other things, a sentiment I fully agree... and other things, a sentiment I fully agree with. From your seat, though, I know it must be hard when responsible taxpayer decisions never make anyone all 100% happy. I want to express my sincere appreciation that the board has clearly and transparently demonstrated their commitment to serving the county in its entirety, not one area, while using data-driven guiding principles. Now, the blue scenario, from my view, does directly address some of the concerns in guiding principles that have been communicated to the community by reducing Cool Spring's enrollment to 90%, ensuring a sustainable balance. In contrast, the purple scenario pushes Pearson's Corner to 96% capacity, even as there's a possibility of Pearson's replacement on the horizon. I would like to call your intention to actions that were taken 35 to 40 years ago. I've provided agreements from county records citing these changes. In 1986, the King's Charter community was developed under a planned unit development agreement requiring its developers to contribute $175,000 to purchase the land Cool Spring now sits on. The section you have listed in the purple scenario, which again, I know is not final at this time, is actually the same section that was developed at the time King's Charter was suggested to be overcrowding Pearson's. From a taxpayer responsibility perspective, the blue or green scenarios do make the most effective uses of our resources, fully utilizing a brand-new facility that's been funded by taxpayers. The purple scenario leaves Washington Henry at only 64% capacity, which is a pretty inefficient use of public investments. Effectively, the purple scenario contradicts those main guiding principles for conducting this exercise in the first place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Packett, followed by Jennifer Newman.
Good evening, School Board members. Thank you for your time and effort you dedicate to our schools and children's education. My name is Adam Packett, and I am a resident of King's Charter in the Ashland District and proud father of two boys who attend Cool Spring Elementary. Like many parents here, I deeply care about the school community my children are a part of and want to ensure that any boundary adjustments serve the best interests of the greatest number of families. I understand the need to address overcrowding at Cool Spring, and thank you for listening and bringing the cottages in this year. It's been incredibly helpful. I can't tell you enough, thank you enough for that. But I urge you to consider the long-term impact of these changes on students and families. The blue scenario makes the most sense of the proposed scenarios. It efficiently balances school populations while keeping neighborhoods together and minimizing unnecessary student disruptions. One of my biggest concerns, actually my number-one concern with the purple scenario is how it could negatively affect families by splitting up a neighborhood and potentially creating a ripple effect of overcrowding at other schools down the road. While Pearson's Corner may remain a smidge under capacity in the short term, the projection does not fully account for the school's planned rebuild beginning in a couple of years. The blue scenario, however, offers a more sustainable solution, ensuring that student populations remain at manageable levels throughout these transitions. I would also like to remind the board of the planned unit development agreement between King's Charter and Hanover County in the 1980s, where King's Charter contributed $175,000 for the land for Cool Spring, adjusting the known overcrowding at Pearson's Corner back then. I want what's best for my boys, neighborhood, and every student in Hanover County. I believe the blue scenario offers a fair, thoughtful solution that balances the building capacity, maintaining community stability, and prioritizing the well-being of our children. Appreciate your time and consideration, and I trust that you will decide how best to support our students and families. I also love the additional 10 minutes of recess. I think that's so incredible for these children. I've got my wife texting me too, like, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Newman, followed by Danielle Geist. Danielle Geist? There you are. Okay, I'm sorry. You were quick.
Good evening, Chairman May, Dr. Pennecoff, and board. My name is Jennifer Newman. I am a resident of the Chickahominy District and Milestone Neighborhood, and a proud parent of a ninth grader at Atlee High School. I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the redistricting proposed for our middle and high school boundaries, and I'm asking the board to please allow all existing Atlee students to have the choice to remain at Atlee High School through their graduation. The high school years are a crucial time for our kids to prepare for college, and they would lose so much traction if they had to switch schools. Impacts could include losing teacher and counselor relationships, which are so important for recommendations, extracurriculars, leadership opportunities, and friendships and social connections. One of the key principles of the boundary adjustment process was to minimize impacts to students, and I understand and support the logic behind the boundary changes, but request that we minimize the impact to the existing Atlee High School students. If these boundary changes had been made before my daughter started middle school, we would have celebrated. We are part of the small group of Kersey Creek students who do not attend Oak Knoll in Hanover, and it was a very painful adjustment, leaving nearly all of my daughter's friends from elementary school. And it took her a couple of years to really find her people and establish strong friendships. To start that whole process over in the middle of high school would be extremely disruptive and emotionally taxing. Mental health issues are prevalent among our kids, and we should do whatever we can to help create stability and not add unwarranted and unnecessary stress and hardship. Based on the data presented by MGT, it does not seem like Atlee is at risk for being overcrowded in the next few years, so by allowing them to stay through graduation really wouldn't put that much of a hardship on the school. I captured a few of my daughter's comments because she filled out the MGT survey, and I had her cut and paste it over for me. So this is a quote from my daughter. "I think it's a good idea for Kersey Creek to go to Hanover in the future, but please let students already at Atlee stay if they wish to. I would be devastated if I had to switch schools. It's hard for me to make new friends, and switching would be very difficult. If I had to move, it might also make it harder for me to learn and have a good high school experience. I already know so many teachers at Atlee and involved in extracurricular activities and clubs. It would be very hard on me and other students to start all over. Please don't ruin high school for me and other students and make us miserable." Okay, that's the end of her part. So I'll close by saying, I'd also ask for you, if you could, to share your plans for how the middle and high school changes will be implemented as soon as you can. As you can imagine, this level of uncertainty is creating a lot of stress in our households and has been a big distraction. The proposed middle and high school boundary changes are the same in all three of the scenarios that you shared, so it doesn't seem like this necessarily has to wait till the very bitter end to be communicated. So thank you for your consideration and for supporting a solution that cannot only solve for the long-term boundary changes, but also the short-term support for our students.
Thank you. Danielle Geist, followed by Elizabeth Ferencrog.
Hi, my name is Danielle Geist, and I'm a mother of a ninth grader at Atlee High School. I also live in Milestone, but I'm in the Ashland District. The other half of Milestone is in the Chickahominy District. And our neighborhood is proposed for the rezoning to Hanover High. I wanted to know how our Milestone community felt about the proposed rezoning, so with the help of individuals in our community, I shared an informal optional survey with my neighbors to find out how other parents were feeling. The survey was not affiliated with the Milestone HOA. I received 65 unique responses from parents with at least one student in sixth through 11th grade attending either Chickahominy and/or Atlee High School. These responses represent about 35% of the total student count from MGT's middle high school rezoning map for the section that includes Milestone and Todd Apotamy. From the survey, 86% of parents would like to have the choice for their current middle high school student to stay and continue through their Chickahominy-Atlee path. When asked what concerned the parents, the top answer was social interactions. Over 50% of the parents ranked it as a 10 out of 10 in the level of their concern. Many parents noted that their students previously experienced a significant change in their peer group due to the move to Kersey, to Chickahominy. Let me share some comments. Last year, there were 125 Kersey 5th graders. Less than 20 went to Chickahominy. Making friends was difficult with only one friend in one class. Our students have already had to separate from their elementary school friends when they went to CMS from Kersey. This would be a second time changing their social circles and peer groups. Both of our children went through this scenario when leaving Kersey to go to Chickahominy. They forged ahead, making new friends and finding their place. To do this again to these same students during the critical high school years will have a significant negative impact socially and academically. The next top concerns from parents were academic interaction, teacher-counselor relationships, sports, and class scheduling availability of seats. 45% of parents ranked sports at a 10 out of 10 in level of concern.
30 seconds.
Parents noted how students had formed strong bonds with both teammates and coaches, and were concerned about leadership opportunities at a new school. Our Milestone community has come together, sharing our concerns with you. Remember that the numbers that are listed in the MGT presentation represent accomplished middle and high school students with strong bonds, academics, social, and extracurricular in the current school settings, as parents provide us the choice to allow our middle high school students to stay and continue at Chickahominy and Atlee until they graduate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Ferencrog, followed by Bob Nelson.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Ferencrog, and I'm a seventh grader at Chickahominy Middle School. I'm here tonight because I live in the Milestone Neighborhood, and I love my school and my friends, and I don't want to have to say goodbye to them for the second time. I believe that all students already attending any middle or high school should be given the opportunity to decide whether or not they wish to stay where they are. It's not, please don't take them away from the schools they know, the friends and teachers they have built relationships with, and the sports and clubs they love. The neighborhood I live in has already had to leave their elementary friends behind and start over. I walked into my sixth-grade classes not knowing a single person. This is because of the very small number of students that live in Milestone and Todd Apotamy that went to Kersey Creek and later on Chickahominy and Atlee. I spent the entire year working hard to make friends in my classes, and I grew to love my teachers and peers very much. Chorus became the highlight of my day because of the sense of community that I found. I also earned a leading role in the school musical Nizzies. We practiced every day and really became like a family. I've come a long way from being told that I and only 15 out of the 122 5th graders from Kersey Creek would be attending Chickahominy instead of going to Oak Knoll alongside the rest of my friends. There is still an emptiness in my heart from feeling like I wasn't special and that no one cared about these 15 kids. I still remember the day when every single teacher and all my friends got to tour Oak Knoll while I sat in a half-empty classroom doing nothing. The sadness when not a single teacher came on my tour of Chickahominy is still with me. I was heartbroken to have to leave those friends that I had known for years behind. I have had to try very hard to make new friends, and the thought that I might have to leave them too really upsets me. Once again, these same 15 7th grade students are being told they might have to change schools, forcing only this limited number to start over again. The thought that unlike the rest of Chickahominy, I will not get to sing the eighth-grade songs in chorus, or enjoy eighth-grade Fun Day or the eighth-grade dance with my friends, or be able to sing and dance my heart out on the Chickahominy stage as I have watched the other eighth graders do. Once again, I will walk into a different classroom.
30 seconds.
Have no friends. All those other kids would already have their friend groups figured out, and I would be the outsider again. My hope is that I and the rest of the Milestone and Todd Apotamy students will be able to graduate together with our CMS family, completing our middle school journey and ready for the next chapter. Although small in number, please consider allowing these current students the chance, the choice of continuing their current educational path or opting into the proposed changes.
Thank you.
Please, thank you for your time.
Have a good evening. Bob Nelson, followed by Elizabeth Weber.
Good evening, Chairman May and School Board members. My name is Bob Nelson. I reside in the Ashland District in the Honey Meadows subdivision. The Honey Meadows subdivision opposed Taylor Farms rezoning, eliminating 43 homes. That results in less of a problem at Cool Spring Elementary. Honey Meadows was part of the solution. My concerns, my comments concern Cool Spring enrollment and redistricting. I sent a document to you on February 10. It reviews September 30 enrollment for the years 2019 to 21. That's the primary focus tonight. The document shows actual and projected K-5 student enrollment in September 2021. Actual Cool Spring enrollment was 722 students, 94% of capacity. Cool Spring's had major increases of 60 students and 100 students in 2021 compared to prior year projections. Moreover, in May 2018, the school division knew that new homes in the Honey Meadows subdivision had .9 students-per-home impact on the three schools, well above the .5 student-per-home planning assumption. That data was publicly available as a result of a major rezoning case in the South Anna District. The large enrollment increases at Cool Spring compared to projections was the direct result of new home construction near the schools. The school division had an enrollment problem in September 2021, but did not address the issue until the fall of 2023, two years later. Families have purchased new homes along Atlee Station Road based on proximity to the three schools, but never once in over 25 years did the school division indicate that access to neighborhood schools would be denied. Residents should not pay the price for county planning failures and inertia. Redistricting will be enormously disruptive and burdensome. It's the wrong response. An eight-classroom addition to Cool Spring eliminates the need for redistricting. Most elementary schools have additions. Six were completed in the 1980s and 1990s. Cool Spring should be added to that list. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Weber, followed by Melanie Razak.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Weber. I'm in the Ashland District, and the subject of my remarks is the school boundary adjustments. My family has lived in Hanover for over 30 years. My husband and I attended Cool Spring in Washington Henry and then Chickahominy and Atlee. We were actually at Chickahominy in 2001 when we went through the redistricting to Oak Knoll and Hanover. So we understand and recognize that this is not an easy decision, and no solution is going to make everyone happy, but it is necessary. We appreciate that a professional organization was hired with the experience to help you make the best decision for our entire community, so we thank you for that. We ask that you please remember why this boundary adjustment is occurring, which is because of the overcrowding of Cool Spring. If the purple option is chosen, the overcrowding of Cool Spring will be shifted to Pearson's Corner, resulting in a 96% capacity, which will then lead to nearing full capacity at Chickahominy and Atlee. Simply put, the purple option does not solve the problem. The process has been stated to ensure that we continue to serve our students and facilities that are used in the most effective and efficient way possible. The purple option creates an uneven utilization and will not effectively utilize a newly-built school. Schools that are overcrowded negatively impact our community, hinder the educational experience and the overall well-being of our children. As we see at Cool Spring, classrooms become cramped, leading to discomfort and distractions that make it difficult for our students to focus. Crowded schools place an immense burden on teachers and staff. More students will require more work, which can lead to burnout, reducing the quality of instruction and support they can provide. As a community, we must recognize the quality of education directly influences the future success and well-being of our children. Therefore, it is imperative that we address this issue with a long-term, data-driven solution. The blue scenario will alleviate and sustain overcrowding immediately and in the long term. It will responsibly and effectively use our taxpayers' dollars. It will ensure safer and more efficient transportation, and it will not divide a 40-year-old established neighborhood, continuing our community integrity. As our Hanover County School Board, I ask you to please use and apply data in your decision. Consider our community roots and the guiding principles of balancing utilization and avoiding island zones.
30 seconds.
Please keep our, please, thank you. Please keep our hard-working, amazing teachers comfortable and set up our kids and our community for long-term success. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Razak, followed by Kiri Burdan. Is Ms. Burdan here? No. Isaiah Dabney? Isaiah Dabney? Megan Barker, or Barger? Um, oh boy. Aitha? Thank you.
You had, that's all you had to say. She got it from there.
Thank you. Okay, Melanie?
Uh, good evening. My name is Melanie Rosak, and I'm in eighth grade at, sorry, the English is not English-ing today. Tonight, I'm here to address the school rezoning, which I know has become a very important topic to many Hanover residents.
Melanie, I'm sorry you stopped, you paused there, paused the time. Did you say you're an eighth grade student somewhere?
Uh, yes, I'm an eighth grader at Chickahominy Middle.
Thank you. You left that part out. I just was trying to make sure I was following you. Thank you.
No, that's on me. So, I'm an eighth grader at Chickahominy Middle, and my siblings, I have two younger siblings, and they're fifth and second graders at Kersey Creek Elementary, and we're residents of Milestone, which is now zoned to go to Oak Knoll Middle. I'm here tonight to ask that Milestone isn't redistricted, which I know is a bit much to ask, but I would like you to hear me out. And if that isn't possible, at least let the students who are going to go to Chickahominy next year or Atlee next year, those students, to continue attending there. First, I'd like you to hear my personal story, and in only the past five years, I and many students in my neighborhood have gone through a lot. As you all know, five years ago, we faced the coronavirus pandemic, and for the rest of that year, everyone was confused and scared, didn't know what to do, myself included. When I was in the fourth grade, I spent the entire year learning through Zoom in my closet, and I spent almost the entire year isolated from my friends who attended in-person school. And by the time I was in the fifth grade and back face-to-face, I had my two very best friends in my fifth grade class. They would be going to Oak Knoll next year. I was absolutely miserable the entire year. Now, skip ahead three years, we're in the present day, and I'm an eighth grader at Chickahominy Middle School. I've made some incredible friends, and I finally feel comfortable in my own skin. I have extracurriculars that keep me busy throughout the week, including the school musical, which we're currently practicing. I have classes and teachers and friends I look forward to seeing every day, and a school that I just feel so happy and comfortable in. And speaking of that, Chickahominy is now a place that my siblings are comfortable in. They attend choir concerts, they attend my musicals, and they go to Charger Day every year. They know they're going to Chickahominy next year. They're comfortable with so many of the people and the environment, and like, the fact that they might not be attending is hard for both myself and my siblings to comprehend. I don't know what's going to come out of my meetings, but I do want my voice to be heard in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Zenat Nisa?
Who knows? Good evening, members of school board, neighbors, and fellow parents. My name is Hita Paniky Parambl, and I'm from Chickahominy District. Thank you for giving me a chance to address the school board again, and I'm not a public speaker, yet I stand before you to address the proposed HCPS school rezoning, the three proposals, out of which two impacts three hundred more students than the third one, and replaces kids from one of the closest neighborhoods to Cool Spring Elementary. I stand before you, not just as a resident of Giles, but as a mother who carefully chose this community with one goal in mind, to give my children the best education possible. We invested in our homes, our families, and our futures based on a promise. A promise that our children would attend Cool Spring Elementary, a school that we planned for, sacrificed for, and built our lives around. Now, with these rezoning proposals that promises being broken, our children who today can walk or bike safely to school will be put on buses, adding unnecessary time to their day and burdening an already strained transportation system. These proposals do not follow the very principles the board set forth. Principles meant to minimize the disruption and prioritize our children's well-being. Instead, they separate the neighborhoods arbitrarily, disregard natural boundaries, and force families into uncertainty. And for what? To displace students from a higher-performing school? To double the cost of transportation? To uproot young children from their friends, teachers, and community? Or for a short-term solution that does not even address future growth? We are not asking for favoritism. We are asking for fairness. We are asking you to uphold the commitments made to us when we chose this community. We have offered solutions through polls and staff. An extension at Cool Spring Elementary, a plan that truly resolves the overcrowding without displacing our children. We plead to be heard. Tonight, I ask you, no, I urge you, to stand with us, protect our children, honor your own guiding principles, and choose a path that strengthens rather than fractures our community. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Zenat Nisa, followed by Dr. Kiran Tawari?
Good evening.
And what magisterial district are you from?
Chickahominy.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, members of the board. I am a Giles resident and mother of two children who love Cool Springs Elementary School, and I'm here to present their concerns. They want to walk to the school and are requesting you, please don't take that opportunity from them. And we all recognize that school capacity needs to be addressed, but what we cannot accept is a plan that creates more problems than it solves. I'm here to talk about the facts. The blue and green proposals fail to meet the guiding principles outlined by this very board. They increase transportation costs, lengthen commute times, and disrupt hundreds of students. And yet, there is a viable solution that achieves the same goal without these consequences, expanding the Cool Springs Elementary School. Why does this make sense? First, it provides a permanent solution, ensuring we don't face another rezoning crisis in a few years when new housing developments like Charleston Ridge second and even more, add even more students. Second, it minimizes disruption. The goal should be to impact the fewest students possible, something these MGT proposals fail to do. And let's talk about transportation. The proposed shift to Washington Henry Elementary School would not only force students onto buses who currently walk, but it would also cost taxpayers nearly twice as much in transportation expenses. In a time of budget constraints, this really makes sense. We should think about it. The solution is clear. A Cool Springs expansion aligns with the school board's guiding principles, minimizes harm, and provides a future-proof solution to overcrowding. The Giles community is not asking for special treatment. We are just asking for responsible decision-making. I urge you to consider this carefully. The right decision is the one that serves students, families, and taxpayers, not just today, but for future. I walked around, many of us Giles parents walked around in the neighborhood, and were asking our neighbors, what do they think? We are four hundred and sixty-plus residences, houses living there, and over a weekend, roughly around two hundred and seventy, parents gave their consent in the form of signatures, and we submitted the petition. It's an ongoing, we'll go to more parents, we didn't have enough time. We have submitted that to the board in email that, please listen to us, please listen to our concerns, and do what is best for our children. That's all we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kieran Tawari, followed by Kristen Holtie.
Hello. I'm Kieran Tawari, from Chickahominy District. Good evening, member of the board. I come before you tonight with one simple question. Would you send your child into a school that is actively being constructed? Because that's exactly what this proposal would do to our children. Let's start with the OBS. While constructing, construction is happening, where will our childrens go? Their playground, gone. Their outdoor spaces turn into construction site. Their gym already deemed below today's standard because of the outdated ceiling height, now forced to accommodate even more students without any improvements. Let's talk about our safety risk. The noise alone will disturb learning, but, but worse, the exposure of construction material and potentially urban contaminants could harm students' health. The last time the parents raised concern about the mold in school, what happened? But, yeah, what happened? Has this old building been properly inspected? Has year-quality testing been conducted? Or are we expected to just have someone's word for it again? Because that's a risk, and we are not willing to take to, with your child's health. This is not just about rezoning. It's about the fundamental responsibility this board has to protect to students under scare. We cannot, in good conscience, place our children in aging, deteriorating, building with known structural concerns while construction is happening all around them. If we move forward with this plan, we are choosing to prioritize convenience over safety, cost over children's well-being, and short-term fixes over long-term, long-term solutions. Our kids deserve a safe, stable learning environment, one that does not require them to those construction zones to breathe in questionable air. We have responded to do better, and tonight, we are requesting that the school board do share this. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Holtie, followed by Angel May.
Good evening, school board and administration. My name is Kristen Holtie of the Cold Harbor District. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. First of all, I want to say I appreciate you. Happy School Board Appreciation Month, and also Happy School Board Clerk Appreciation Month. You're very much appreciated. You know, the one good thing about having an overcrowding is a lot of people are moving to Hanover County. You know, they appreciate our appointed school board for all it does. So, that's the one good thing about having overcrowding. The other good thing is, it takes time to build. When people say expand Cool Springs Elementary, it made me think, it takes time to plan to extend a school. I mean, it can take several years just to do that. So, I really sympathize with what you have to, what the decisions you have to make as far as the boundary goes. I appreciate you as an appointed school board for being transparent, patient, and tolerant of everyone. I also do not believe biological males should compete in female sports, nor should boys should be allowed in the girl, in the girls' safe space as far as the gymnasium, as far as the gym or the locker rooms. I request the school board stay strong to your beliefs and morals and continue to put the children first, for they need to be protected from those that want to indoctrinate, hurt, confuse, and manipulate those children to rebel against their parents and be put in harm's way, such as sex trafficking. Boys' men do not belong in girls' women's bathrooms, locker rooms, in sports. Girls' women need to have the safety and security that they will not be violated by a boy man coming into their private space. Boys' men's taking part in girls' women's sports take away from the hard work of women and the future of those girls' women financially and mentally. Girls' women need to be encouraged to participate in their sports, not beaten mentally and physically by those boys' men that are stronger and able to compete or have a longer stamina. I just wanted to thank you for letting me speak to you tonight, and hopefully, we won't get any more snow this week. I'm tired of the snow myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Something we all can agree on. Thank you.
Angel May, followed by Charlie Hoag.
Hi, hello, good evening.
One second. Is Charlie here?
Please, Charlie.
Okay. Um. Per Tap Sahoo? Thank you, Ms. May.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the school board, for letting us speak tonight. I am speaking on behalf of Giles to support Purple. I have one question for you. What happened to the principles you set forth for this rezoning process? You said you would minimize student impact, yet these proposals disrupt entire neighborhoods. Over eight hundred-plus students near Giles will be having issues. You said you would consider transportation, yet you are forcing kids who can currently walk to school into buses, increasing commute times, and doubling costs. Giles is one of the closest communities at a walkable and bikeable distance. We have houses at Giles as close as point-two-five miles from Cool Springs Elementary, while as a section of King's Charter, which falls under purple option category, is two-point-eight miles from Cool Springs Elementary, limiting the time and cost required on the bus. The blue and green options directly contradict the guiding principles presented at the January fourteenth school board meeting, increased transportation time in busing, and removal of our neighborhood school's significant impact on multiple neighborhoods and the creation of an arbitrary boundary that does not adhere to natural barriers or major roads. The options go against the principles that guided the process. Additionally, the proposed plans field designs to target the Giles neighborhood. We bought and built homes here specifically for Cool Springs Elementary as a commitment made by Hanover County and which was marketed and sold by Ryan's Homes in East West Community. This proposal undermines those commitments and counts stats on future promises made by the county regarding the school assignments. I'm pretty sure Hanover County was aware of the marketing tactics by these builders. It was posted everywhere. It was in advertisements all over, the newspapers. So, I ask again, what happened to those principles? Were they just words on a page? Because if they truly guided your decision, the blue and green proposals would have never made it this far. Additionally, I am also concerned about the longer times. My child is going to be on the bus, you're going to have to pick him up probably around seven AM, and he probably won't get home until after four. Also, the traffic in front of Giles is insane. They're planning on putting a roundabout. Now, you're talking about buses having to go around the bout to get into Giles and to get out. How many school buses are going to be passing by? It's already difficult for us to get in and out of Giles on both sides, whether you turn left or turn right.
Thirty seconds.
If this board ignores us tonight, you aren't just rejecting our voices, you're rejecting the very values you claimed to uphold. You are telling every family member in this country that their trust in the system was misplaced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pause there, Madam Clerk, just one second, please. So, so we've had it said three or four times tonight, and I just want to clarify something or other. Expansion of Cool Spring does not help Chickahominy and Atlee, who are both at over ninety-five percent full right now. So, I, I hope that the citizens understand, we are trying to come up with a comprehensive plan that deals with more than just Chickahominy. Okay? So, suggesting us to be able to consider just expanding Cool Spring doesn't solve the bigger problem. And I ask you, please, read what we say, read what I put out earlier. We are not trying to come, we're trying to come up with a solution that will best help everybody, okay? We are, we, and again, we have no proposals. I mean, we could keep going tonight, we're going to keep going for another couple hours on this, but I'll just remind you, we have, there is not a single recommendation yet been made to this school board, not one. There are multiple scenarios out there, and there's even more. There's an Indigo one now. And I just share all that with you. Please, you have got to work with us and let you know that we understand it, but we're not trying to make a snap decision that's going to do anything other than, as I read in my very elegant statement, I thought, try to come up with a solution that's best for all of Hanover County public schools. try to come up with a solution that's best for all of Hanover County public schools, okay? So I, I needed to clear, clarify that point pretty quickly. Expanding Cool Spring is really not an answer because Atlee and Chickahominy are both over ninety-five percent. So if you continue to throw in more numbers and more numbers, all you're doing, there is no chance of expanding either Chickahominy or Atlee High School, okay? So you have to know that in us, in our work, please. Thank you. I'm sorry. Now we can go back. Mr. Vice Chair, I had to get that off my chest.
Was it off? Mr. Sahoo. Followed by Eric. Palito. Very good. Short but sweet. Thank you, Mr. Sahoo.
Thank you. Good evening to all the honorable school board members. And my name is Pratap Sahoo. I live in Chickahominy District. Uh, I am here today to talk about the boundary adjustment and school region options. Um, as honorable Chair says that we hear you a lot about that expansion options. So I'm sorry to say, but I have the same thing in my note. Yeah, so, so yeah, let's, let's work as a team and collaborative way for a common objective, how it beneficial for all the, um, students and all the local communities and all, not just to disturb the, um, transportation like there, there will be a lot of, um, hurdles we might face if we do this plan. But yeah, let, let me go through my, my notes. I might not be able to complete my speech within these three minutes allowed time, but I hope the school board has already received my context from a prior email. So as a homeowner, we trusted that the promises made when he bought our houses would be honored. But this rezoning our neighborhood doesn't just affect our children's education, but it also affect our investment, property value and the integrity of this school system. So we attached to Cool Springs Elementary School and it was not just a clear understanding, but also an explicit, explicit selling point made by Hanover County and developers and also the builders, right? So, so hey, there is a community coming with high rating school. You can move there. So a lot of things happen here and there, but we, we have no clue. And, and the community have been approved by the Hanover County like way long back, maybe fourteen years back. I don't know what the plan was taken that time, but yeah, sorry to say. So what we can do, um, and, and by doing this, what the message we are sending to the upcoming families and the, and the children's education, like it's, it's, it's totally disgraded overnight. This is not just about the education. It's about the trust, right? So, so again, sorry to say, but I have to say, our top priority is to keep all the kids at Cool Spring Elementary School as much as possible. The options are available, but if we can, then definitely we would like to propose to expand the school, Cool Spring Elementary School by adding some additional cottages.
Thirty seconds.
Yep, sure. Or by the time school board will decide how we can expand that school building, right? Which is not an option for now. So by saying this, our next preferred option is the Purple Boundary Adjustment. These options affect approximately six hundred plus students, whereas blue and green options impact significantly more around eight hundred plus students, right? And I request you all to please not take this lightly and rethink a long-term solution rather than a short-term strategic plan.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not sure how the survey data is accuracy still. Eleven second is there? Can I speak?
You're done. Thank you. Eric, thank you.
You can use your glasses. I don't care. You got something to hand out to us? Give it to the clerk, please.
Uh, VJ, Ben Reddy, you're on deck.
Okay.
Actually, I thought your hat was cooler than your glasses, so.
Oh, hey, well, I actually, um.
Wasting your time. Go ahead.
All right, that's all right. Yeah, so, uh, my name is, uh, Eric Palito. Um, I'm part of the Chickahominy District. Um, first and foremost, I want to say I'm proud to, um, plant my roots here in Hanover County. You know, I'm, I don't want to say my neighborhood. I just, I'm, the only time I'm going against another part of Mechanicsville is when Mechanicsville Hornets are playing, um, the Blue Star Cowboys or, you know, Atlee's playing Hanover or Mechanicsville. Um, but I'm, I'm here to ask you guys today to maybe, I'm urging you to pause, um, all rezoning decision um, until a fir, until a full digital audit of MGT's data models is conducted. Um, I found numerous inconsistencies, data errors, um, that, uh, I think we need to look at. Um, a lot of us, we went to those meetings. Um, it kind of became like, uh, you know, no longer neighborhoods. We were districts in the Hunger Games. It was, you know, team purple, team green, team blue. Um, everybody was getting worked up. Um, I think we all obviously, um, know how important mental health is to our children. I was military for fifteen years. I got out. Most people say, why didn't you do twenty years? I got out because of the mental, um, just moving my kids multiple times. And I promised them I wasn't going to do it again. Um, as you, you see, if you guys have this, um, one thing that I noticed with the survey, um, when I took it, you know, I know that mistakes happen making surveys, but this could be a, a major mistake in um, people's emotions going and you're automatically, if you're strongly disagreeing with something, it's, it's usually at the bottom. Um, what I caught was that there was too strongly agrees and no strongly disagree. Um, that did get fixed, um, but, uh, you know, how many people took the survey? Maybe thinking that was, uh, strongly disagree. Uh, might have just misconstrued the data a little bit. Um, also, I mean, I'll go over this real quick. I got fifty-three seconds. So, um, transparency is just everything. We're just kind of, you know, we're looking at all these data models and we're not data anal, or analysts. And, uh, you know, it takes time to digest. Um, as we slow down and start looking at stuff, we have questions about, um, you know, is the school capacity, functional capacity.
Thirty seconds.
RFP that I received through the FOIA access, seven sixty-eight. Um, on MGT's, it said the capacity was seven sixty. So that little bit of deviation, you know, it builds after a while. It's like using a compass and not, um, you know, taken into effect, uh, I'm sorry, glass went off. Taken into effect like, uh, magnetic north, you know? You, you can come off a little bit with little mistakes like that. So I ask you guys to maybe give us a little more time to look through the data. Thank you.
Thank you. VJ, followed by Marija Ristic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Penikoff, senior staff. My name is Vijay Chenreddy and I'm from Chickahominy District. Uh, today I'm here to actually talk about a fact-based analysis of MGT Consultants' contract violations. So I'm here to present an objective analysis of MGT Consultants' failure to fulfill its contractual obligations in the school boundary adjustment process. And I want to actually detail out some of the facts out here. Now, failure to provide flexibility for rising fourth and fifth graders. The contract explicitly requires MGT to include an option allowing rising fourth and fifth graders and their siblings to remain in their current school. The proposed boundary adjustments do not provide this flexibility, requiring families to transition abruptly. And the other point, failure to analyze transportation impact. The contract mandates an evaluation of attendance, zone changes on bus routes and travel times, along with contingency plans to maximize transportation efficiency. No comprehensive transportation impact report has been presented. Instead, available data shows increased commute times, higher transportation costs and an increased reliance on bus transportation for students who currently walk to school. Failure to provide a comprehensive demographic analysis. The contract requires an analysis of demographic effects, including total enrollment, instructional, functional capacity, race, home language and free reduced lunch status. Additionally, MGT is required to evaluate financial impacts related to transportation and staffing. No complete demographic or financial analysis has been presented, making it impossible to assess the full impact of these changes on different student populations. The lastly, inadequate community engagement and data transparency. The contract requires MGT to collect and assess community feedback. However, many residents have reported limited opportunities to provide meaningful impact, uh, meaningful input. The lack of transparency in MGT's reports raises concerns about whether data was properly considered informing these proposals. Given these facts, I urge the school board to require MGT Consulting to fulfill its contractual obligations before considering any rezoning changes. Making decisions without complete data contradicts the purpose of hiring a third-party consultant.
Thirty seconds.
And does not serve the best interests of Hanover County students or taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have time for two more speakers.
He said we have time for two more speakers.
Yep, Ms. Ristic and Alexandra Cox. Is Ms. Cox here? Hold on one second, Ms. Jennifer Thompson. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, dear school board members, now thank you for your time today. Now, my name is Maria Ristic and I am resident of the King's Charter and a concerned parent at Chickahominy District of Hanover County. I am here to voice my deep concern regarding the proceed, proposed school zoning changes that would divide our neighborhood and disrupt the stability of families like mine. I have one child attending Cool Spring Elementary and another at Chickahominy Middle School. Our family has worked hard to establish a routine that supports their education, after-school care and overall well-being. Any zoning change that forces my children to attend different schools would create unnecessary stress, allergic challenges and disruption to their daily lives. Like many parents, I have carefully chosen after-school care as a safe and structured environment for my children. If our neighborhood is split and we are reassigned to different school, we will lose access to this critical service, leaving us without an alternative. This is not just about convenience. It is about ensuring our children have consistency and security in their education. Beyond the logistical impact, breaking apart our neighborhood would harm the strong community ties we have built. Schools are more than just buildings. They are places of learning, friendship and stability. Frequent reassignments can negatively affect children's academic progress, emotional well-being and social development. This decision also raises concern about fairness. Every child deserves the opportunity to remain in the school their families have thoughtfully chosen. Splitting King's Charter will create unnecessary hardship and long-term challenges for students and parents alike. I respectfully urge you to consider the following. Keep King's Charter assigned to one school to maintain community unity. Allow families to remain in their current school to prevent disruption to childcare and establish routines. Prioritize the well-being of students and families over zoning changes based solely on capacity numbers. I ask you to make this decision with the students' best interest at heart. Our children deserve stability and our community deserves to stay together. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Bless you. Jennifer Thompson, followed by Bridgette Charles. Ms. Charles here. One second, Ms. Thompson. Is Carol Sanaam or Saneem here? Okay, one second. You're on deck. Is Andy Hoag here? Okay, just stay put. Jenna Childress. Okay, and Tina Steenbur. Tina? Oh, stay put. Well, I'm just checking, okay? Those are all the speakers that have signed up tonight, okay? Ms. Thompson, you're on.
Okay, good evening.
Hang on, Ms. Thompson, please. After this. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Uh, my name is Jen Thompson and I'm here with Meredith and Lane and we are part of the Henry District. We're going to talk about something different. No, just kidding. We're up here about the boundary adjustment.
You got us all excited.
So tonight I stand before you as a proud member of the class of nineteen ninety-four from Rural Point Elementary. I speak not only on behalf of my children, but for generations of families who've called Rural Point their school. Families spanning from the classes of nineteen eighty-nine to twenty-twenty-four and more importantly, tonight I stand with members of the future class of twenty-twenty-eight, where, whose educational journeys will be shaped by the decisions you make in the coming months. Rural Point is more than just a place of learning. It is where we grew up, where lifelong friendships were made and where families from the Studley area have built a tight-knit supportive community. As we approach the fiftieth anniversary of the opening of Rural Point in the fall, events have been planned to honor the history and traditions that have made Rural Point such a special place. These deep-rooted connections are what make this area unique. However, the proposed boundary changes are deeply concerning to our families. All three scenarios as proposed offer no alternative for us. Sending our children to Pole Green Elementary, uprooting them from the stable, nurturing environment they've known and severing vital connections to friends, teachers and a community they cherish. We ask you to consider the broader impact these changes would have on our families, particularly concerning transportation. Pole Green Road is already heavily congested and adding more school-related traffic will worsen an already strained situation. We request that you preserve the Studley Road area, including Williamsville Road to Summer Hill Road, the neighborhoods of Summer Plains and the Colonies and Hanover Town Road, within the Rural Point Elementary Zone. Under the proposed scenarios, Rural Point will continue to have a school bus picking up children that will go right past our homes. These proposed changes are not just about where our children will attend school. They're about preserving the legacy of Rural Point Elementary. For the future of our children, our community and the preservation of legacy we've worked so hard to build, we ask you to carefully consider the lasting impacts these changes could have. Before you today, you'll find the names of individuals who stand with us in our effort to keep Rural Point as it is, a map outlining the affected area, heartfelt comments from families in our community and photos capturing moments when earlier generation of Rural Point students, now adults, came together as Rural Point Indians, as well as today's generation, now Rural Point Roadrunners, all showcasing the unity that has always defined us. Now I turn to you, our leaders, to listen to our concerns and understand the profound impact these changes could have on our future and our community. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight and I appreciate you.
Thank you and thanks for bringing your family.
And we enjoyed seeing the new Roadrunner. I'll just tell you that, a year ago. Coach Ike, do you have a motion for me?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to extend, uh, public comment for four more speakers. We have one, two, three, four more speakers. Second.
Second, we have a motion by Coach Ike and a second by Mr. Martin. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will extend the, uh, public comment time for another twelve minutes roughly to allow the next four speakers.
Okay, we got Carol next and then Andy Hoag is next. And then followed by Jenna, bless you, Jenna Childress. And then finally, Tina Steenbur.
I'm Carol Senamy from the Ashland District, King's Charter subdivision. My first thing, and I'm going to end up repeating half of what the other folks said, is please do not split a subdivision. A subdivision is a hu, a family. And you've heard the trauma that can be caused by splitting the subdivisions as well as busing the kids. The other thing is, is I've heard a lot of talk about the mental health. The other thing is, is I've heard a lot of talk about the mental health. If something forbid should happen, like what has happened across the country with mental health children, as a result of the boundary adjustments, the school board would be the first to be looked at because the adjustment, the boundary adjustments, could cause stress on the children. As a result, you need to have the boundary adjustment completely justifiable and 100% necessary. With that said, there are so many variables, I agree with the other gentleman, that MGT did not consider. They are just using some statistical analysis, and it actually, I don't think any of the three scenarios should be used. It does not exclude the capital plan. The 19, or 2018 capital plan has five schools on it that were supposed to be repaired or replaced within five years, by 2024. They have not happened. The 2024 plan has information that Beaver Dam should be replaced, and nothing has been mentioned about that. Pages one and two that I gave you have the statistics, and I've cited where I got them from. The next thing is that the planning group is allowing developers to continue giving them permits to develop, and MGT did not take it into consideration. They did survey the developers, and there are 270 homes actively being built right now.
Thirty seconds.
The, the, oh, the, the one thing that I suggest is that we do not change any boundaries that are not overcrowded, which means I think that we need to leave the high, middle school and high school alone. If you look at Cool Spring, it's obvious. Cool Spring is overcrowded, and is really the only school that needs to be adjusted.
Thank you.
So, so you made two comments that I got to make sure you know the correction on. Beaver Dam Elementary School has been awarded a contract to be rebuilt, and is in the, and has been funded, and is active, and so is Battlefield Park. So, your information was not exactly correct, but we have let contracts for both of those schools to be built, and you're going to hear about Washington Henry if you stick around for a few minutes, and we're going to be rebuilding Washington Henry, too.
Thank you.
Okay? You're welcome.
Andy Hoag, followed by Jenna Childress, then Tina Steenberg.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. You're kind of stealing a lot of my thunder. I wanted to talk about that. No, I'm here as a father. Everybody here.
I hate to ask you, Andy.
I always stand closer.
Or tilt the mic up. Your choice.
You're good.
There you go. Thanks.
I'm coming to you as a father, a parent of two children at Cool Spring Elementary, as much as everybody else in here is doing the same. We're here speaking about students that were, you know, being moved in middle school at this point, and how it's breaking their hearts and having to split up from their friends. Now, we're talking about moving 1,000 kids all around the county to different schools. Think about the impact that that's going to have currently, and that's in all scenarios: blue, green, and purple, and indigo, most likely, and tangerine, or whatever other color we choose. Creating more transportation issues, creating more, you know, just all kinds of things across the county. The numbers in the utilization for Washington Henry, which I believe we're going to speak about shortly, are for a school that's yet to be planned or built. So, asking students to move or move there to a, you know, a lot older school in the next year or so just doesn't seem feasible for anything to happen there. The proposals also, as presented intentionally or unintentionally, have pitted neighborhoods and communities against each other at this point. We have people yelling for purple, we have people yelling for blue, green, whatever it is, and it's creating friends to fight against each other for no reason other than that we want the best for our children right now. I just ask that you guys think about taking a pause, thinking about what's happening, and understand that it's not just one neighborhood, it's the entire community at this point. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenna Childress, followed by Tina Steenberg.
Yeah, Jenna, yeah, I was going to say, would you mind?
I'm going to have to pull that down.
Now that Andy's done, would you mind pulling that down? Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Penikoff and senior staff. My name is Jenna Childress. I'm from the Ashland District. I did inaccurately put Chickahominy, but I think I was dreaming about Chickahominy Middle School at the time. But I'd like to share my thoughts regarding the redistricting options, based on the information shared. As a parent of children attending Hanover schools, I have reviewed the blue, green, and purple options. I strongly believe the blue option is the best choice, with reasons rooted in the guiding principles provided by MGT and the school division's executive team. Number one, the biggest priority for the division is space utilization now and in the future. Currently, Cool Spring is overcrowded. The blue option will immediately reduce usage to 90% of capacity and ensure balanced utilization across all schools, ranging from 74% to 92% now and in the future. The blue option will utilize the planned space for Washington Henry, rather than leave the space underutilized at 64% post-renovation. Blue ensures no other elementary school, i.e. Pearson's Corner, would be pushed near maximum capacity, as outlined in the purple option. Selecting blue ensures sustainable capacity management for Chickahominy Middle and Atlee High School for years to come. Number two, the blue option minimizes the number of students impacted by boundary changes while achieving utilization goals across the school division. Although the total number of students impacted is lower in the purple scenario than the blue, moving the smaller number is counter to the overall space utilization goals and causes overcrowding elsewhere. The blue option minimizes the number of students affected while accounting for space utilization needs and minimizes impacts of neighborhoods. Blue keeps students who live in large planned communities together. Number three, to ensure transportation efficiency, the blue is the best option. Giles, Cranny Island, and Atlee Manor are approximately three miles away from Washington Henry, taking eight to nine minutes, while King's Charter is five to six miles away, taking 11 to 14 to Pearson's Corner. Number four, the blue option avoids creating island zones. The purple option effectively splits King's Charter, as well as sections of Rutland, leaving half of these neighborhoods detached from one another. Splits such as these have several social and emotional repercussions for children and are not in the best interest of communities. The blue option keeps Giles, Cranny Island, King's Charter, and Rutland communities together, ensuring community integrity and cohesion. Number five, respect the planned unit development agreement. The request for rezoning of agricultural land to residential King's Charter was approved by our Board of Supervisors in 18, in 1986. A PUD agreement, recorded in 1987, documents a sum of $175,000 contributed by the developer towards the acquisition of a site for an elementary school, which would in fact serve King's Charter students on completion. The acquisition of land and construction of Cool Spring was a result of this PUD for approximately 900 single-family homes in King's Charter. That origin story suggests that separating students in King's Charter, as proposed in the purple plan, runs counter to original agreements. In conclusion, I believe that the blue option is the data-driven decision that our school board must make. Selecting blue will alleviate overcrowding, create sustainable space utilization system-wide, effectively utilize building space in the current financial investments of the division, maintain community integrity, ensure transportation efficiency, and honor planning.
Thank you.
Previously established. Select blue. Thank you for your time.
I don't know what you do for a living, but you honestly could be a speed reader. I could just tell you that right now. That was amazing.
You ever thought about doing auctions?
Yeah, exactly. All right, one more.
Actually, I was going to say something different. I, um, my name's Tina Steenberg. I'm in the Ashland District. I did want to make one comment.
You want to pull your mic up a little bit? There you go.
I wanted to make one comment. As far as I understand it, you are not responsible for zoning nor developers, and consequently, it seems to me that, I understand these parents being upset. I would be as well. I don't minor grown at this point, but maybe they should address those issues to the people that are making those decisions and the promises that were made to them, because I would be upset as well. I understand that. But I wanted to first say thank you to the school board and to Dr. Penikoff for putting students first. It is not easy to stand for policies when a minority is fighting those policies every day, and I go to school board meetings, so I know that's true. However, you can take heart from recent elections and realize that many of us support the things you've stood for. Academic success should always be the first goal of a school system. Civic and moral values are also critical. Every child should be given the equal opportunity to succeed academically and emotionally while not depriving others of those rights. Thank you for protecting girls' rights to safe and fair sports. Also, finding ways to facilitate critical reasoning, independent thought, and creativity is very valuable to a free society. Any efforts to foster independent thinking will provide great rewards in the future. A well-rounded childhood and school experience should always be a school board's goal. Music, sports, art, and debate help mold successful students and adults. Thanks for caring about all of Hanover students and creating a great opportunity for their success. And please continue the hard work, and know that many of us are behind you. And I would also say that both of my kids graduated from Hanover schools, as did I, and my children have done well, and I thank the success to the Hanover County school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will close public comment time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank everyone tonight for being civil and getting along together, even though we have differences, and we're going to try to work those out. We're actually, you've provoked some cells in our brains already tonight, since we've been communicating a little bit behind the scenes or underneath this little ledge here, and, yeah, we're still looking for answers. We truly are. We don't want to disrupt neighborhoods. We don't want to move kids and displace, we, we don't want any of that. We know other school divisions have done this. Other counties, surrounding counties, do these things, and we're trying to hold true to what we can hold true to. So I just want to let you know, we're working hard at it, and I appreciate your obedience and patience. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Vice Chair. With that, we'll move on to our action agenda, and our first one is consideration of the proposed policy and regulation revisions, and, uh, I guess there's, no, you're okay? Because that, you're, you're the only one standing between you and the, uh, and the preferred public speaker for tonight, the invited public speaker, so go ahead.
...rewording that the General Assembly has done with vapor products and nicotine, and then the other one, including gambling in substance use education. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but otherwise, I would ask that these be approved.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Hahn? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. We prove both of them simultaneously? We prove them together?
Yes.
Do I have a, look for a motion?
A motion to approve the proposed revast policies together.
Thank you, Coach Ike. With Ms. Welsh on the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, without any further ado, we'd like to have an update on Washington Henry Elementary School and a consideration of a CUP.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Penikoff and the board, Josh Bauer, Crib Chorbonne, Associates Architects. We're going to do a, see if we can do this. I'm not used to raising it. First, I do want to thank you for extending elementary recess. That is, that is a big, big positive for the entire community. So tonight, we are going to do a brief overview of the Washington Henry Elementary School, and in the action item, we are asking for the ability to submit the conditional use permit for Washington Henry. This is also called a CUP. The, this is a requirement, because the, an educational use is not permitted pretty much in any, in any zoning in the county, including agricultural, and in this case, residential. There we go. So tonight, we're going to talk about existing conditions, go over the proposed construction plan, we're going to talk about the proposed site plan, the floor plans, the elevation, and then also the project schedule. So just a quick recap, again, you're looking, the, the actual property that you own at Washington Henry is two parcels that is separated by Shady Grove. One of them is 14.2, and the other one is 9.4. These are both zone residential. The elementary school, the playgrounds, and the running track are on the parcel to the left-hand side, and then onto the right-hand side is pretty much just a wooded area with the, the Stormwater Basin. So how do we propose to construct a new school? So similar to what we're doing at, where we did at Ashland, and we're doing at Beaver Dam and Battlefield, is to construct the new school behind the existing building while it's, while it's in operation, with a safety, security fence. Once the new building is open, we're going to move the students and the, and staff from the existing elementary school to the new school, then we will demolish that existing school and then create the, the parking for both buses and cars. So this is the, the plan that we're looking to submit this Friday. So the, so Shady Grove is, is up and down, and then Man Drive is running, is running horizontal. So the positive on this site, there's many positives. One of them is that we can actually enter, so cars would enter on the top, on the upper side of Shady Grove, come down, we have a, an extremely long car drop-off. Car drop-off has become a challenge, not just here in Hanover, but with any of the schools that we get to work with all throughout the Commonwealth. It was increasing as we hit COVID. Once we hit COVID, we had an explosion of the amount of parents that have a desire to drop and, and drop off and pick off their, their students. Couple of things I do want to note is that the bus drive and the, and the drop-off is on the, on the far left-hand side. That entrance and exit would be off of Man Drive. The cars would enter off of Shady Grove and then exit onto Man. So the idea is that the, the overall traffic flow of entrance and exit is pretty much going to see the same as it currently exists there on the site. Something that is important is that the existing school can remain in operation the entire time while the new school is being built. You can see in, in red is the existing school that, that would be demolished, and then the car and bus drop-off would happen.
Okay, don't go any further. I'm sorry, you got to go back, because we're having, please, where's the bus loop is what she's asking me, and I'm trying to make sure that I understand it. Do you have a pointer?
Let's see if I can, uh, is it, it doesn't make me, um, so the bus loop is on the left-hand side, so it's that loop that goes off of Man, runs up, and then goes around the back of the building. So.
So where were they actually debarked the students, is what I'm trying to understand? Where were the students unload the bus?
Great question. So one of the.
Thank you.
So, so as we worked on the design, we met with, with, with both safety and security and also with your transportation.
Right.
One of the things that they asked was in the afternoons, really in the mornings and the afternoons, but the, the students for the buses and the cars would enter and exit at different points of the building. So what we have is the buses, the students would actually exit out of the classroom wings and go to the buses, and the students for, for, with that, for car pickup would enter out of the entrance and then go to the, the cars. So they're, they're two different areas.
Josh, I hate to ask you, walk to the front and point. If you can. So, so where are the buses? The buses are coming in that, the long loop right there, right? That makes sense. Okay. We, we just couldn't understand the bus loop you were talking about, because we don't see a loop, per se. We see the lines parallel there, but we couldn't understand what a loop was, unless you were talking about them looping all the way out on the northern part of the building. Sorry. That's what our confusion was.
It creates a really nice separation.
Right.
And then, and again, what we, what we heard was not to have cars or buses exit on Shady Grove. So we, so we're, again, we, we think we're making significant improvements on the overall traffic.
Coach?
And maybe more car loops like they discovered at Ashland.
Yes, so this.
Because during drop-off, they, they created more car loops in order to get more cars in and slow things down.
Off the road.
And get things for the kids to get out and boom, gone.
Absolutely. So what we counted is, is a maximum of 55 cars at any one time currently here. We have more than double, I think it was around 126. here. We have more than double, I think it was around 126, that we can, that we can have in the new drive. So we're more than doubling the amount of cars that you currently have in your, in your, on a daily basis.
Thank you. I'm sorry we slowed you down.
No, it's, it's, and these are all questions also that planning, so we had our initial meeting with planning, with VDOT, with the whole group. They have, they gave us a few comments, you know, kind of flipping the, pardon me, flipping the, the trash a little bit closer to the school and getting rid of a couple gates, but overall, we received very much a positive feedback from, from everybody in the group. And, and again, so this is with some small modifications. This is what we're submitting to, for the CUP. Again, the CUP is, the next steps are community meeting, and then planning commission, and then supervisors, and then we submit for land development. Okay? Any other questions on?
And you'll build the new facility, the building itself independently, and then you will build the driveway that's on where the, the current building site is after the school year's over, where we could tear the building down and put in the new asphalt.
Yeah. The, the goal for this would be to be done at the end of May, early June with, with the new construction. So that way, basically, as soon as, as soon as you let out the students, we can move all the stuff over and then have the entire summer to be able to, to get everything set up and, you know, and demolish the existing building and then build the new bus and car, and car loop.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the site?
Anybody else?
So, so the building right now, this is the current design. As you can see, it's a modified prototype of Ashland, Beaver Dam and Battlefield Park. So the, this is a, it's about 102,000 square feet, two stories, two classroom wings. The main street design with, on the right-hand side is gonna be going from bottom to top of the administration, your gymnasium, student space, including music, and then your cafeteria with, with adjacent stage. Left of Main Street is gonna be your two, two-story classroom wings. We are looking at four deep, so K through five, four deep, and then two, and then two pre-K classrooms. This is just the second floor. Media Center will be on the second floor, your art classrooms, as I said, and then the remainder of them would be the classrooms and these orange small group spaces. So this is the, the front elevation of the, of what we're going to be submitting on, on Friday. We are developing the other, the other elevations. I don't have those for tonight, but this is the elevation that we're gonna be, that we are gonna be submitting, keeping in mind that this is the first step in the process. So then, so I said, we're gonna get feedback from the community, from, we continue from the design team, for anybody on the board member who, any of the board of board who wants to give comments. And it will evolve, ideally, the, the, the final elevation that gets approved in the June, May-June timeframe by the county supervisors, that is what we need to have as our final design. You know, so, so again, we have room and we have time. This is the first, we think, really, really good concept for everybody to start with. Anybody have any questions? If you, if you look at this, it, there's, there's a lot of reminiscence or homage to the, to your historic courthouse. Okay? And then overall schedule, as I said, we're presenting tonight, we're asking to be able to submit. We're, we anticipate that we're gonna have community meetings sometime here in, in March or early April. We're gonna wrap up schematic design. And then the big key steps for CUP is, we're hoping that we're gonna be able to get in front of the planning commission April and the Board of Supervisors in May or June, and then, and then begin land development with the goal of, of putting this project out to bid sometime in the November, early December timeframe, when we think that is, that puts us in a really good range for a 16-month construction schedule to be able to get us in June of '27. Okay? Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Okay. Are you done?
I am done. Just asking, I said, all we are asking is for
Any further questions from up here? I would entertain a motion that we approve the new Washington Henry Elementary School for consideration to get a conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize that Hanover County Public School staff submit the CUP application for the Washington Henry Elementary School by submission by the date of February 28, 2025.
Thank you, Coach Ike. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Martin with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cypher, are you still there?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Do you agree with the proposed, to put the CUP out there?
I do.
Thank you. It carries. Congratulations. Thank you, Josh. We appreciate you as always. Next, we would like to do the 2026 superintendent's proposed budget. And look, the account gets up and people rush out of here, because it's like, all they wanted to do was hear the keynote speaker.
Yes. They know it's going to be boring if it's numbers and all of that. But no, Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Penicoff, we're here tonight to seek approval of the superintendent's proposed budget. What we have here is a summary of all the funds as presented. You can see that the operating fund is increasing by 15.7 million or 6.3%. School nutrition, 1.1, 12.1%. And capital improvements, down 83.6 because it demonstrates that we no longer have in year one, the construction of Washington Henry and Beaver Dam. As you know, the original budget was presented on January 21 of this year, and then we had a public hearing on January 25. And we've responded to any requests and had opportunity to meet with all of you to walk through the budget documents and respond to any specific questions. So I'd be happy to take any questions tonight or
Do you have any questions? Anybody from the board have questions? All right. With that, Mr. Martin, may I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the FY 2026 superintendent's proposed school operating budget in the amount of 265,446,983.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coleman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cypher?
Aye.
Thank you. All those, all those opposed? Motion carries. You're on a roll. Don't stop now. Terry.
Yes. So next, we're seeking approval of the five-year capital improvement plan that totals over the five years 139.8 million or 14.3 million in fiscal year 2026.
Mr. Coleman, do you have a, a motion for me?
Yes, sir, I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 fiscal year to, to fiscal year 2030 capital improvement plan in the amount of 139,788,000 for all five years, including 14,261,250 for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lynn with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, thank you, Mr. Cypher. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, we're looking for approval of the fiscal year 2026 school nutrition fund budget in the amount of 10 point, I've been cheating and saying 10.3 million dollars, rounding it, and you all are giving me the entire number, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Ms. Lynn, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY 2026 school nutrition services budget in the amount of 10,298,057.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Welsh. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so this budget is now officially the school board approved fiscal year 2026 budget. And we are scheduled, Dr. Penicoff will be presenting that Wednesday at the Board of Supervisors meeting. The meeting begins at 2:00 PM, and I think we're third on the agenda. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. And I'd encourage all board members, if you're available Wednesday afternoon, to come out to watch Dr. Penicoff present this on our behalf. I'll do an introduction of Dr. Penicoff. And I, Ms. Stone, you kind of, you kind of ran away on us, but I just gotta tell you, this is a great budget, and we appreciate the hard work that was done, putting the priority on our teachers and our staff. And I applaud us to be able to do what we've been able to do. And it truly is a partnership with our Board of Supervisors, for them to be supporting us and listening to us as we've gone to them with the needs to do what we can do for our teachers. And it is, sometimes the news doesn't cover it, really, not really completely for us when it goes out, but we've been able to really make some pretty significant strides for some people, especially the midterm teachers that have been here for a longer period of time and trying to right some wrongs that occurred when we had to compress our works, get work, the, the, compress the timelines for our teachers. So I just thank you. I think it's a great job by the board, and I really appreciate everybody working hard on this. And we can thank
I, I would like to thank, we were able to do this in our smaller meetings, but Dawn Hardman and Melanie Terrell, who did all the real number crunching, putting the document together with assistance from the communications team, Justin and Chris. So it is a full-team approach. I'm just the one that's standing up there at the podium.
And, and Dawn, I saw you slip in the back, and I was gonna acknowledge that. We thank you for being the number cruncher and getting the numbers right. We really appreciate it. So with that, I think we're up to a fiscal status report, facility usage report and calendar of board-related events. Board members, I remind you that those are in your packets for your review. Schedule of topics for next school board meeting. Dr. Penicoff?
We have the recognition of the Sports Backers Active Living Leadership All-Stars Program that will be carried over from this month to next month. We also will have a math update in March, and we'll continue our work on the code of conduct. And those are the things we have on the agenda for now.
I bet you more comes on it before we get to there. That seems to be our trend. So with that, are there any other, anybody got anything for the good of the, of the board? Mr. Cypher, anything?
I do not, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. With that, Mr. Coleman, I would entertain a motion?
Yes, sir. I propose we adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Lynn. Any discussion? There never is. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Bye, Bob. Enjoy Michigan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Enjoy the snowstorm.